Good evening. Welcome to the Herndon Town Council Public Session, April 10, 2018.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. My heart is heavy with the announcement that I'm about to make. As many of you are aware, Councilman Jeff Davidson tragically passed away on Saturday, this past Saturday, following a serious car accident where he sustained, obviously, many injuries. The entire town of Herndon community is mourning the loss of Councilmember Davidson and keeping his family and his partner Paula in our thoughts and prayers. We can't imagine the grief felt by those who are in Jeff's family and were close with him. He was a close colleague of ours and it leaves a void here on the council for sure. I've received many condolences from across the Commonwealth, from elected officials, from residents and individuals around the area who've expressed their sadness over Jeff's passing and their appreciation of his service to the town. He was dedicated to helping every resident of the town and he was knowledgeable and passionate about many causes, including transportation, inter-jurisdictional matters, and pedestrian and bicycle safety. He enjoyed sharing his joy of Herndon's history on the Herndon Historical Society and volunteered with several community groups, including Friday Night Live and the Herndon Festival. We also remember Jeff's love of building, repairing, and flying his own airplane. He was never happier than when he was talking about his airplane and flying. He was a member of the Sterling Flyers Flying Club, the Experimental Aircraft Association, and the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. His enthusiasm and dedication to Herndon helped shape our community and it will continue to do so. His legacy will continue. I've ordered that the town flag be lowered to half-staff in memory of Councilmember Davidson through this weekend. And at this time, there has not been an announcement of any memorial as of yet. The council and I will be making comments during our comment portion to tribute to Jeff, but please, we ask you to join us for a moment of silence to remember our friend and colleague, Councilmember Jeff Davidson. We do have several presentations this evening. The first presentation was to be the recognition of the Young Artist Scholarship winners, but Arts Herndon notified us that we needed to postpone that to another time, so we'll be rescheduling that. Our first proclamation is joyful and I'm so grateful that it happens to fall tonight. Tonight, the council has the honor of recognizing National Autism Acceptance Month. I'd like to mention before we get started that Delegate Boyko was scheduled to participate this evening, but she's been called back to Richmond for a special session of the General Assembly, so maybe we'll have a budget sooner or later. Supervisor Faust is in a similar situation. The Fairfax County Board is meeting tonight on their budget, so he's unable to be here, but I believe Jenny Phipps is here from his office. There she is. Thank you for being here, Jenny. First, I'll recognize Vice Mayor Baker to read the proclamation into the record, followed by comments from council. And then our Chief of Police is going to come forward and make some comments, and then we'll invite down all of the tribe and Elizabeth Vosler and anyone else who would like to come down and speak, and then we'll make the presentation. So, Vice Mayor Baker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing National Autism Acceptance Month, April 2018. Whereas autism is a motor sensory difference experienced by children and adults, some individuals are able to speak and others are not. Speech is not an indicator of intelligence. Autism is a lifelong condition. Skills and quality of life are improved by intervention and support services. And whereas people should presume competence in autistic individuals, this means believing autistic individuals can and want to learn. This means providing quality education and intervention. And whereas individuals want to be included in the community, this means ensuring access and acceptance. Autistic individuals are your community members, your neighbors, your friends, and family. The Town of Herndon proclaims acceptance and welcome for autistic individuals in the community. Welcoming autistic individuals comes through education and community support. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaims April 2018 as National Autism Acceptance Month in the Town of Herndon and urges all employees and residents to participate in our municipality's National Autism Acceptance Month activities in order to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Comments from council? Vice Mayor?
Yes. So, thank you, and it's an honor to read the proclamation tonight and to see so many folks in the audience here to celebrate Autism Acceptance Month. I love that it's Autism Acceptance Month. It's not awareness, it's Acceptance Month. And that is so relevant, and I think given the leadership we have in town through several speech pathologists, particularly Elizabeth Vosler and the Growing Kids Therapy Center, has really shown so many of us, both on council, other residents, neighbors, folks from near and far that have learned about the good work that Elizabeth and other folks like her are doing for the autistic community, has just been a great way to expose, I'll just say myself personally, but lots of folks I know, to autistic individuals, to the fact that particularly in being able to help them share the information that they want to share, right? The fact that what Elizabeth and the Growing Kids Therapy Center can do by unlocking all this great information that sometimes they can't just tell us directly, but through RPM they're able to communicate and share so much more information with us, and it's wonderful. And again, where it states presume competence, right? And presume that they have so much they want to share with us, autistic individuals who have limited speech or are non-verbal. So, that part is wonderful. For me personally, my, one of my dear cousins, Sarah, who lives in Arkansas, her oldest son, who I think is seven, William Paul, is autistic. And I absolutely love, it's been such an education for me, just watching her talk about William Paul and what he brings to their family and how much his two brothers have learned so much love by what they see in William Paul and just what individuals with autism bring to the table. And I think it really sums up with what we like to say a lot in Herndon, that Herndon is a hometown for everyone. And certainly autistic individuals are a great part of our community. So, we're happy to have this proclamation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, this is a wonderful proclamation and starting, I mean, there's an organization called, we started on council here and I'm chair of it and very proud of that, is the Herndon Youth Advisory Council. And one of the mandates we did sit down and talk about was making it available to all students in Herndon, and that included growing kids, and one of them is here tonight, Ian, who's an absolute rock star. I can tell you for a fact, and I know that the chief will testify to this, but I won't go into details on that, but in every single meeting we've had, his thoughtfulness, the amount of detailed knowledge he has on certain topics is absolutely incredible. And the great thing about that is some of the students there hadn't been, they hadn't met anybody with autism before. And, you know, the second thing else, when you first meet somebody, it's a little bit different, but now it's just wonderful to see that his, you know, from the start, he put his flag in the ground and said, "This is what I am, and this is what I think," and it's been wonderful. So, I'm really proud of this proclamation and I'm proud of Ian for being part of our group. So, thank you for being part of that and being a trailblazer and very strong to do that. Really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Olem, followed by Ms. Friedrichs.
Thank you. I'm so glad we're celebrating this. A number of years ago, my late husband's father remarried, and so my stepbrother-in-law had autism. So, about six months after my husband had passed, I go down to visit and all the in-law relatives are pretending it never happened, that he never existed, except Eric. Eric came over and gave me a hug and said, "I still miss Harvey, Miss Sheila." So, he got it. So, I know that you do have a lot to give in the community because that meant so much to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olem. Ms. Friedrichs.
I concur with all of my colleagues and I'm so grateful that you're here tonight. Welcome. And as Vice Mayor Baker said, you know, Herndon is a hometown for everybody and we're so glad that you're a part of our hometown.
Thank you. I concur. I'm thrilled to have this proclamation read into the record for the second year in a row. I've neglected to mention for the audience that the tribe wrote this proclamation themselves. These are their words that they wanted to share with the community about what it means to accept autism into your community. And it's so great to see Ben and Tommy and Ian and Ryan here again. It's so nice to see all of you. Did I miss anybody? I always am afraid to do that.
Lisa.
Oh, Lisa. Oh, Lisa.
She's been here too long.
Oh, it's nice to see you. So glad you're here. And, you know, the, Herndon is a hometown for everyone. I know that everybody on this council feels very strongly about that. And I always said to you, no matter where you come from, how you worship, what you look like, who you love, and I've added to that list, or how you communicate, Herndon welcomes everyone into our community and we are grateful for all the things that you are teaching us. So, I would like to invite down Chief de Board to make a few comments. And while you're coming, I neglected to mention, I was a little distracted, that Councilmember Cunningham is not here this evening due to a family emergency. So, sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. I appreciate the time tonight to address a few things. Town Council, I wanted to bring your attention to a very special group of people, a small group of people, that have really helped us with something. Back in February, Mr. McKenna asked the police department to host the Youth Advisory Council for a meeting. And we did that with great pleasure and got to meet everybody on that, including Ian Nordling. And Ian is not only a rock star, but I will tell you, I think, a very brave individual. And I want to tell you a little bit about what Ian and his cousin Gina Cooper have done for us, for our community, for our profession, and certainly for our officers here in town and some of the things that we're working on. Gina unfortunately has been unable to be with us tonight. But when we met in February, Ian and Gina actually had talked about a project they were working on. And I left a copy of this with you up there. This is a brochure that Ian and Gina wrote together and put together on their own, and it's a brochure for information for first responders dealing with autistics. So, it's really a guide for us to understand the challenges, the limitations, and how we are to approach people that we can provide that maybe aren't verbal or have special needs and some limitations, to help us learn how to communicate, to eliminate any problems that might occur during those encounters. And it was interesting because Gina and Ian, Ian as well communicated to us through a letter board during the meeting. Ian had a very difficult and frustrating experience with a police officer back in his home state, out in Seattle. Is that right, Rosaleen, I believe? And Rosaleen, Rosaleen Presley is here as well. That's Ian's mother. She also had become involved in this. And Ian, instead of taking that very negative exchange that was really happened because of frustration and inability to communicate, Ian has channeled that into a very positive way with his cousin by trying to come out with a way to educate us so that he doesn't have those kind of repeated experiences. And I will tell you, that's a very, very brave way to approach that. And I give Ian credit. That's certainly something we don't see from a lot of individuals. There's no doubt, despite his limitations in verbally communicating, Ian is a very, very intelligent man. So, we couldn't, I couldn't tell you how much we were thankful for that. So, that night, just to progress this a little bit, that night, we forgot to take a picture because we wanted to post it on Facebook and give Ian some credit. So, we invited Ian back to the station one afternoon to take a picture in the station. And I asked Ian and Gina if they wouldn't mind coming in and talking to the officers in roll call, which I thought might create a little bit of a concern for him. He gladly came in and we had a great exchange in roll call with the officers. The officers had some questions about how to interact, and there's no question in my mind, there was a great learning that took place in there. So, we are making progress here in understanding how we do things and how we are to interact, and that's really important because a lot of our community has limitations. They may not be, Ian's limitations, they may be others, but it's helping us learn to communicate as well. We are working with Gina and Ian now to try to find ways to get them back in and really address all of our department, which I think we're doing here in the near future. We're working on some other things with the brochure to maybe get this out to other police departments and make some refinements there, which I think will be wonderful. And I will also say that just our interactions with Ian has caused us to look at some different things from a professional standpoint. And one of the things we are in the process of doing here in the Town of Herndon is we are actually going to create a special needs registry in the town so that people can register. Register sounds like a very formal word, but really provide us with information on their family members who may have limitations of any sort, so that they become missing, we have information and we can help locate them or communicate with them much quicker if we ever have an issue. It's a safer way to approach things, it's a much more efficient way to do it. It will be all voluntary, but it'll be a very progressive thing for us to do to help our community in times of problems. So, we are far along in that project right now and we will be announcing something that all came out of our interactions with Ian and Gina and his mother. So, I'd like to recognize them as well. If they could come up here, please. This is Rosaleen Presley and Ian Nordling. And again, I'm sad that Gina is not able to be here tonight, but I did at least want to address them publicly and thank them for everything they've done. Would you like to say something?
Do you want to say something? Hang on. Just a moment.
What do you want to say? My thanks to... To Chief Maggie. And the... What? H or C? C? And the council. For you. Find it, find it, find it. To recognize me.
Got you.
Absolutely.
Do you want me to repeat that, or did you all get that?
We got it.
So nice of you, Chief Maggie and the council, to recognize me.
It's our honor.
Thank you. Wasn't expecting this, you don't want me to talk. Go ahead. (laughing).
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite forward Elizabeth, or your designee, whoever would like to come forward and speak, and any members of the tribe.
Do you want to... No.
And Elizabeth, remind us, we should applaud in this way.
You can. This is a silent applause. Most of our guys are pretty, this particular group is not overly sensitive to sound like that. So, Town Council, Mayor Merkel, thank you again for this proclamation and for proclaiming this Autism Acceptance Month again. And I do think it is particularly important that these are the words of the members of the tribe that they wrote. And when you had originally talked about this last year, there was sort of a sample proclamation that has been used other places where it talks about autism in sad and desperate tones. And I think that if anybody has gone to see the exhibit of the art that is on display right now, produced by the kids at Growing Kids Therapy Center and some other autistic individuals in the community, when you walk into Art Space Herndon, you will see that it is a bright, joyful display. And that is certainly the people that I know and love certainly at Growing Kids. So, I think that they might have a few things to add to that. And we do appreciate so much the welcome community because inclusion is important. You know, all of our clients simply wish to be included in a respectful way in schools, in communities, in work, employment, and having that voice recognized. So, thank you so much for taking the time to listen.
Thank... Thank you, Town Council. One day I hope all... One day I hope all towns have the same respect for us. From Lisa. This town is my home. This town is my home and my heart. Come in.
C. A. N. I. T. E. T.
Can I get...
A.
R. O. R, O, U, N, D. Can I get a round?
Can I get a round?
O. F. A. B. B. L. A. A, U. S. E. Can I get a round of applause?
Can I get a round of applause?
Four. O. R. T. H. E. T. O. T, R, T, R, W. N. Town. O. O, L, O. F. H. E. I. N. D. O. N. Okay? Can I get a round of applause for the Town of Herndon? Do you remember it?
For the Town of Herndon. For the Town of Herndon. For the Town of Herndon. Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Do you remember it? For the Town of Herndon. For the Town of Herndon. Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause? For the Town of Herndon? Can I get a round of applause?
Hi, Ben. So happy to come again and stand before you. So happy to come again and stand before you. So happy to come again and stand before you. So happy to come again and stand before you. So happy to come again and stand before you. So happy to come before you again and hear this proclamation. Again, thank you very much for this privilege to be included and welcomed in your town, in our town.
Thank you. You know, we're going to invite everyone forward for the presentation, and I just want, I think, on behalf of the council, to thank you guys for being here tonight, especially tonight. The joy that you brought into the room was really needed, and so we thank you for that. I'd like to invite down the entire Town Council, Elizabeth and her students, the tribe, and anyone from Growing Kids Therapy Center, Chief de Board, Jenny Phipps, the Town Manager All right. Our next proclamation is to recognize Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I will recognize Councilmember McKenna to read the proclamation, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 8th through the 14th, 2018. The public safety telecommunicators, 911 dispatchers, are often the unsung professionals of the emergency response team. These professionals gather essential information from callers and dispatch the appropriate first responders to the scene. Public safety telecommunicators are the first contact citizens have with the emergency services and provide a critical link between our citizens and first responders. During Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, we honor public safety telecommunicators, promote awareness of the vital and invaluable assistance they provide the community, and recognize the hard work and dedication of these individuals whom we rely on each and every day. Therefore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2018, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the Town of Herndon, and express appreciation to these extraordinary people who give their time, energy, compassion, professionalism, understanding, and resources to assist each other in sharing our community as a safer place to live. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Comments from the council. Mr. McKenna.
Yes, I'm actually glad you did this. My sister was actually a 911 operator for a few years in Woodbridge, New Jersey, and I can tell you that the calls that came in, the crisis that happened, they're the front lines of everything that happens and delegate the resources that are needed. And I do know the difficulties that she had, and I can just say from my personal experience, when I was taking care of my mother and father, my father always seemed to have things happen at four o'clock in the morning. And, you know, when everyone else is sleeping and everyone else is, you know, tucked away, it's the first line when, you know, dad has fallen or, you know, dad's not feeling right or mom's, you know, got a thing with cancer or whatever, they're the calming voice on the other side of the phone to make sure that, you know, you don't lose it when you're dealing with a loved one. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that does that position or, you know, works hard at it. Know that you're truly appreciated because of my personal experience, both from the family side and also from a personal side, it truly means a lot. So thank you very much, and I'm glad we did this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other comments from council. Ms. Friedrichs.
This kind of work is very stressful, but as Councilmember McKenna said, if anybody's ever in need, these are the people that we are so grateful to know are there waiting to help us and who have the experience and the knowledge to calm us down and to make sure that we're okay when we are really unable to process things. And this actually brought to mind Seth Meyers last night on TV, whose wife gave birth in their lobby of their apartment building, and he spent a lot of time sobbing and talking about the great first responders and the people who, you know, took that call. So I join Councilmember McKenna in saying thank you so much.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Okay, well, I concur, and I know the work that you do is hard and people don't often think about it, but you're talking to people in often the worst moment of their life or the scariest time that they've experienced. So kudos to you for being able to keep calm and help people stay safe while the first responders can get there. I would like to invite forward for the presentation, Mr. McKenna, the chief, and Shristi Dudley is here, who's HPD's Communications Manager. Nice to see you. And I will do the presentation, and then if you'd like to make some remarks, we'd love to hear from you guys.
Thank you.
Oh, and Lisa Herndon can come too if she wants.
Hi. Thank you. On behalf of the Herndon Police Department and the dispatchers, today I would like to thank Madam Mayor, the Town Council members, the Town Manager, and the citizens of Town of Herndon for bringing well-deserved attention and recognition to public safety telecommunicators who are often overlooked and for the critical role that they play in coordinating first response, providing lifesaving efforts, and who are invaluable to the emergency response team. Thank you for honoring us today. Thank you for honoring the voice behind the scene, the heroes with the headsets, and the unseen first responders, and thank you for supporting us every day. Thank you.
I just want to make quick remarks. They are truly exceptional people for us. They have a very difficult job. It's hard enough to sit in a room for 12 hours at a time and still remain that attentive to everything we do. And the community understands that extracting information for them is so important for us to get there, for their safety, to make sure that we can get there quickly and we know we're dealing with. But I also want to say that our safety relies heavily on what they do, whether they get the right information, whether it's relayed to us. We rely on them for our safety every single day, not just the community. So we do appreciate them. We don't always get the opportunity to thank them enough. This week is important, so there's different ways throughout the week that we're trying to acknowledge them internally within the department. But I want to thank Shristi. She's new with us. She's been here less than a year now, and she's bringing great leadership to that group, and we look forward to great things down the road. And I do want to plug publicly, we always seem to be looking for a dispatcher, so if anybody is interested, we always have open applications, so please apply. It's a great job, and the town is a wonderful place to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Our next proclamation is a proclamation to recognize National Volunteer Week, and I will call on Councilmember Friedrichs to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing National Volunteer Week, April 15th through April 21st, 2018. President Richard Nixon established National Volunteer Week by executive order in 1974 as a way to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers. Now in its 44th year, National Volunteer Week has grown exponentially, with thousands of volunteer projects and special events scheduled throughout the country during this week. Together with this year's theme, "Celebrate Service," National Volunteer Week aims to inspire, recognize, and encourage citizens to join together and seek out creative ways to serve their community. During this important week, we celebrate the impact of volunteer service and the power of changemakers to come together to tackle tough challenges and build stronger, more vibrant communities. Therefore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the week of April 15th through April 21st, 2018, as National Volunteer Week in the Town of Herndon, and promote the opportunity to honor the many volunteers who engage in the Herndon community, selflessly dedicating themselves to the service of helping others. Further, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby encourage all individuals to take action by supporting volunteer programs that benefit Herndon residents of all ages, including the fields of health, history, recreation, safety, social services, sports, the arts, and the environment. Further, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia are keenly aware of and appreciate the dedication and contributions that Herndon's many volunteers, past and present, make towards improving our quality of life and making Herndon a special place to live, work, and recreate. And for the 34th consecutive year, the town looks forward to honoring Herndon's outstanding and distinguished individual and corporate volunteers at the Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Night on Sunday, April 15th, 2018. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments from the council. Ms. Friedrichs.
Thank you. Our town needs volunteers to run. This weekend, we will take the opportunity, as you heard, as a town, to salute those who volunteer the most, but we also need to thank every single volunteer, whether they help at the Herndon Festival, support our police department, maintain the history of our town, support the town's artistic endeavors, serve on our boards and commissions, tutor, and sometimes even feed our children. I thank you all for what you do. There's no higher calling than serving others, and nothing creates community more than those who serve it. To those who have donated their time, treasure, and talent to our town, our country, and even our world, I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Other comments from council. Vice Mayor.
So I am, I love this week and this month and that we celebrate our volunteers. It is such a critical part of what makes this town run and what makes it a fun place to live, work, and play. I'm lucky enough to get to, I'm going to speak at the Herndon Senior Center this weekend. They're having their first annual Volunteer Appreciation Brunch, so I love that, that we are recognizing the contributions of folks of all ages that participate in town, and certainly our seniors are a really critical part of our volunteer community. And I also, so my day job, my company, we, they grant us, every year you get a day off to volunteer, so you just have to acknowledge what you're doing and really encourage, I hope there's more companies that, I know we're not the only one, but more companies that do that, that really encourage that community outreach and spirit of giving back. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Olm, followed by Mr. McKenna.
Yes. This is a very exciting time, I think, every year for all the volunteers. When I first moved to Herndon, I didn't know a lot of people, so I started getting involved in different organizations. I see people from Friends of Runny Meat are here, got involved with your group, Council for the Arts, Foundation for the Cultural Arts, Friday Night Live after it finally got started, the festival, and it was a great way to meet people in the community and find out what makes Herndon tick. And I just can't imagine living in a community without all these options and people that care so much because you're always there for everything that we do in Herndon, and thank you very much.
Certainly. Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, I truly appreciate this as well. I grew up in a very small town, so much so that our fire department and rescue squad were completely volunteer, used to be called Volunteer Town USA. So when I moved to Herndon, one of the reasons why I did move here, I mean, it just, there's a soul to it, and you don't have soul without volunteers. I mean, just looking in the audience tonight, you know, whether it's Runny Meat Park or someone who volunteers for the fire department in Fairfax County, or just being there for somebody who really needs it, being a friend. And volunteerism is one of those things that is infectious. When you see someone doing good, and then you feel how much it really fills your soul up, you want to be a part of that. And I think that the tenor of this town has been something of a positive reflection of what Fairfax County can be, and a lot of that has to do with the volunteers, and I'm really proud to be from this place. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, of course, concur with my colleagues. We're looking forward to seeing so many of our volunteers on Sunday afternoon at four o'clock. Tommy McFly from 94.7, is that it? Fresh FM? Yep, he's going to, he's going to be our, well, not our emcee, he's going to be our speaker, so I was super excited about that. It'll be a lot of fun. Also, I think we must talk about how all the things that people love about living in Herndon, they wouldn't be possible without volunteers. The volunteer man and woman hours that are put in making these events happen are worth thousands of dollars. We could not, that wouldn't fit in our budget to have the events in the way that we do. So we're grateful for all of you who spend your time and your energy and your love for the town, and we really appreciate it. So with that, I believe that one of our distinguished service award members or winners from last year is here. Is Betty here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. I couldn't find you. Okay. We'd like to invite you down as well as if there's anyone else in the audience that's won one of our past volunteer distinguished awards. Cindy Roder from Parks and Rec is here. I'm going to invite down the council and the Town Manager, Town Attorney, and anyone else that would like to join us.
Look at all the volunteers disperse when I say, would you like to say a few words? I know how to clear a room.
Well, on their behalf, I will say, Madam Mayor and members of council, you've anecdotally talked about a lot of things related to how important volunteers are to our community and how much they do for us. Just, I'm sorry, you mentioned the value of what a volunteer hour means to the community. Over $24 an hour is what a volunteer hour is worth these days. More than 20 million people volunteered in 2016, contributing more than 5 million hours per year nationally, not in Herndon. Not in Herndon.
It's like, wow, we're really good in the town of Herndon.
Of though, however, out of that 20 million hours, 3,800 hours were contributed to the Parks and Recreation Department, which doesn't include what everyone else is doing in scouts and sports and for the Friends of Runny Meat and Arts Herndon. and how much they do for us. Just, I'm sorry, you mentioned the value of what a volunteer hour means to, to the community. Over $24 an hour is what a volunteer hour is worth these days. More than 20 million people volunteered in 2016, contributing more than 5 million hours per year nationally, not in Herndon. Not in Herndon.
It's like, wow, we're really good in the town of Herndon.
Of though, however, out of that 20 million hours, 3,800 hours were contributed to the Parks and Recreation Department, which doesn't include what everyone else is doing in scouts and sports and for the Friends of Running Meat and Arts Herndon and Hen and all the amazing organizations that exist here in the community. So it's dramatic and significant. They do things for us. The corporate cleanups that happen, we get volunteer groups all the time looking for corporate outings. Vice Mayor mentioned that her business allows their employees to go out and do volunteer hours. Many of the organizations and businesses in the community allow that, and we do projects all the time that there is no way we would ever accomplish without their help. So it's invaluable. You all know it, we know it, and this is a great opportunity this week to recognize everyone for what they do. I'll tell you just about one new group that has formed this year at the high school, which is called the Plant Powered Club. They came out and did some volunteer work with John DeZinski last Friday and wanted to continue to do that over the coming months and into next year. So we're excited about just one more group who's really interested in contributing and having a group of young folks who want to contribute, and hopefully we'll build that into their lifestyle from here on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Our last proclamation this evening is a proclamation to recognize Earth Day and Arbor Day, and I will recognize Councilmember Olem for the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A town proclamation recognizing Earth Day Arbor Day, April 21st, 2018. Celebrated each year since 1970, when like-minded groups of Americans brought environmental protection to the forefront. Earth Day supports the environmental programs, rekindles public commitment, and builds community activism. This year's theme, "In Plastic Pollution," elevates the issue of plastic pollution in the global agenda, aims to inspire effective action to reduce and control it, and encourage leadership in innovative solutions to environmental challenges. Arbor Day started in 1872, when J. Sterling Morton called on farmers and homesteaders to replenish the tree population. By observing Arbor Day, we emphasize the importance of beautifying our town through landscaping and trees, as we serve as the trustees for the future generations. Therefore, the mayor and town council of the Town of Herndon hereby proclaim, April 21st, 2018, as Earth Day Arbor Day in the Town of Herndon. Encourage community enhancement projects such as Boy Scouts, who completed their Eagle Scout projects by planting trees and shrubs at Haley Smith Park, and at a wooded area on the Herndon, around the Herndon Parkway, using donations from the Herndon Women's Club, and by planting trees and creative native perennial flower pollinator gardens at the Herndon Centennial Golf Course. Recognize all the dedicated volunteers that helped with tree and shrub plantings, litter cleanup, and other environmental work efforts. Highlight that the town was designated a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for the 29th year in a row. Further, the mayor and town council of the Town of Herndon hereby encourage all residents to participate in the town's Earth Day Arbor Day activities on Saturday, April 21st, when many local citizens, groups, and organizations will be participating in the town's annual park and stream cleanup, and will be participating in planting an official Arbor Day tree at Brady Park. Furthermore, the mayor and town council of the Town of Herndon hereby encourage all individuals, business, civics, civic, and service associations to recycle, celebrate nature, and to support the efforts promoting awareness of the value of trees and our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from council? Ms. Olem?
Yes. This is so exciting that we're celebrating our 29th Tree City. With, not with us tonight is John DeNoyer, who had a hand in hiring our first town forester, who is still with us all these years. It was after hiring our town forester that we were able to start celebrating being a Tree City, because that was one of the requirements. So I'm thrilled to live in a community that thinks so much about it, and I like the "in plastic pollution." This is a great theme. I have a couple of my friends that when we go to restaurants, before they leave our, the waiters, waitresses leave our table, they say, "Please do not bring us any straws," because that is one of the worst things that we're doing to the environment. I mean, it's just a horrendous burden on the earth to have all those straws in a landfill and all over the globe. So, think about it, if you don't use straws like me, ask them not to leave you one, because it goes in the trash. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs?
I wanted to wait to hear. So when I moved to this town from Naples, Italy, my husband and I were stationed there, well, he was stationed there, I went with him. Naples has been an urban environment for thousands of years, and there's not a lot of tree growth left there, but what they have, they really like. And when I, my husband sent me back to buy a house, I said, "You're gonna love Herndon. It's full of trees." And it still is. So thank you very much. I appreciate our arborist, and I appreciate that we are a Tree City. Thank you.
Thank you. I concur. We like trees, we like nature, we like the environment. We're doing what we can to have it stick around for our children and grandchildren, and we've just launched a sustainability initiative, which we're really proud of, and we're trying to look ahead to 2035, and if we want to be a sustainable, green, renewable community in 2035, what do we need to start doing today? So I'm really excited to be a part of that, and thank you for reading the proclamation, Councilmember Olem. I am going to invite down the council, town manager, and attorney. Carol Hadlock is here from Friends of Running Meat Park, and her husband Jay. There are people here from Herndon Environmental Network, John DeZinski's here, Cindy Roder, and I'm sure I'm missing some volunteers out there, so please come down and join us. We would love to have you.
[inaudible]
Okay. One, two.
You guys got to say, yeah, speech time, speech time. I'll wait. Well, I have a bunch of notes, but I'm not going to read them all. So, but the main thing I want to do is thank the mayor, town council, town manager, all the other departments in the town, and our town citizens, and as you mentioned, volunteers. Without all your support, the community forestry program and our environmental programs would not work. So that's the main thing I want to say this evening, is just to thank you, and we welcome your continued support, and we'll be planting trees continuously, and welcome you all out to, on April 21st, that's our annual stream and park cleanup, as well as we'll have a short ceremony over at Brady Park at 9:30 to plant some trees. We'll be doing some stormwater drain marking called "Write His Rain," and planting some flowers with another volunteer group called VT, VT Savea, which has adopted that part of Brady Park. So thank you very much, and we look forward to having volunteers come on out and help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This brings us to, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Carol? Please, please do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm a little distracted tonight. I apologize.
I understand. I just want to add a few more words to what John said, to remind you that Friends of Running Meat Park will be providing hot dogs to all the volunteers after they've completed their cleanup on Saturday. Hot dogs? And, we're offering a vegetarian option this year.
Nice.
And also, in keeping with the Earth Day proclamation, one of the best ways you can help the earth, we all can help the earth, is by landscaping with native plants. And in that, in the keeping of that, I want to let you know that Friends of Running Meat Park are sponsoring our second annual native plant sale on May 5th in Running Meat Park from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. We're going to have two vendors this year instead of just one, and they are well-known throughout the Northern Virginia area for the quality of their plants, so come early for the best selection. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm so glad you were here. Now that brings us to comments. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I would be very remiss if I didn't open tonight's comments on a few words about Councilmember Davidson and the time I've spent with him over the past year in his job. We, he availed himself of regular meetings with me, and we got to spend a lot of time together, and those that have spent times and meetings with Jeff would understand that he would come to every meeting with a list. And I don't know if Jeff was a baseball player like I was, but he couldn't bat out of order out of that list. He had to execute that list straight on down. But it was, there was no doubt that he was passionate. He was passionate about many things. One of the things he was very passionate about was his career as a project manager. Jeff once spotted the project management book of knowledge on my bookshelf, and that sparked a whole very animated 20, 30-minute conversation about project management. He truly loved being on council. He loved this town. I would like to think that we came into our jobs roughly at about the same time, and we were growing in our jobs together. I will miss him greatly and miss his, my time with him. Now that being said, it's also been a very sad week for the staff of the Town of Herndon, in addition to Councilmember Davidson. The town is mourning the loss of another member of our family. Victor Angel, or how he was known by his friends at the shop, Victor Angel, passed away suddenly this past Saturday as well. In February, Victor celebrated his 10 years with the town as a utility equipment operator. You would have seen him out on the streets, his pictures are up there for you, up on the screens. Victor received a customer service award in 2017, and he was highly praised and respected by his fellow employees at the shop. Many have commented to me, as I walked around the shop yesterday, talking to supervisors and staff members, Victor always had a smile on his face. He loved his job. He loved working here. He was a hard worker, he took pride in everything he did. He never complained about anything he was asked to do. He just put his nose to the grindstone and knocked it out. He set that example for everybody at the shop. He had a great sense of humor. He felt life was better when you were laughing, and he brought that to the environment at the shop, which was, which is very welcomed from his colleagues. He'd motivate others to get the job done right, because that's the pride he took in what he brought to the Town of Herndon. He always volunteered for the night shift on snow removal, so for those of you that saw those plows out in the streets in the middle of the night, I guarantee your life was touched by this man. Victor would often take two- to three-week vacations to visit his family in Guatemala. He had just returned recently from one of those trips when he passed away. Victor is survived by three children. I've met two of his daughters today, aged 24 and 17. They're lovely young ladies, obviously moved by their father's passing. There will be a service for Victor this Thursday at 3:00 PM at DFS Memorial at 42, or, excuse me, 4425 Brookfield Corporate Drive in Chantilly. I ask that everybody join the Town of Herndon staff family in keeping Victor and his family in your prayers. He will be greatly missed by all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Madam Town Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is truly sad that we lost two of our, two of Herndon's sons this weekend. Victor will be missed by all of his fellow employees, and although I didn't know him personally, I was aware of who he was and what he did for the town, and as a resident and a fellow employee, appreciate that, and will miss him. I did know Councilman Davidson personally. He was a client, and while sometimes I know people don't always go to their attorneys under the best circumstances, Jeff always did, I will miss his intelligence, his inquisitiveness, and his respect for his fellow council members and the employees of the town. We will miss him greatly.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna?
Yeah. Should we make our comments first and then go back?
Whatever you would like to do.
Okay. Since it's my time, I'll speak of Jeff first. In regards to working with him, we got elected together, and I'll just intimitate, you know, going back to some of the themes that were touched by the town manager and town attorney. I met with him frequently, and he liked to meet at two certain spots. It was either at his house or a restaurant in Reston. And there's times, you know, he was one, but he really needed to talk about something. He would get very excited and say, "Hey, can you meet at like 10:00 o'clock?" He'd text me a message at like 8:30, and I'm like, "I have work. I can't meet at 10:00." And I was like, "How about after work?" And he's like, "Okay." One day, I was really tied up. I had a Herndon Youth Advisory Council meeting at 7:00, and I was, I had a really big project that was due, and he was like, "I'd love to meet with you. Can we meet in Reston or my house?" I'm like, "I have a meeting at 7:00. We can meet either at Jimmy's," because I had to get dinner. So it was either Jimmy's, The Breeze, Sully's. I gave him several options, and about five minutes later, he comes back and says, "How about Anita's at 5:15? That's a compromise. I can live with that." So get to Anita's, and we're talking, and I, you know, he was, he liked to do certain things in a certain way, and I was like, "Anita's was different." And then all of a sudden, he, the waitress comes over and goes, "The usual with the ginger ale?" He's like, "Yes, absolutely. What would you like, Bill?" So, and these are the things I'm going to miss, because he truly loved this town, there's no doubt about that. I would, you know, I appreciated his zeal and how much he truly loved serving Herndon. You know, I would go to meetings with him, and he would, you know, ask me questions that I never even thought of thinking, because I don't, you know, and he has, and, you know, he has a project manager's mind, and I certainly don't. And it was that perspective that would give me some unique angles on how to think about things. So the diocese has lost someone truly remarkable, and I can also tell you, in his love of planes, his love of history, you know, and the historical society and the signs, the sign committee, he was so proud of that, and he'll be missed.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
As our town manager just mentioned, we lost two very valued members of the Town of Herndon family this weekend, and their loss affects us all in many ways, and we continue to learn new ways to mourn their loss as something we think that we'd like to talk to them about comes up, and we turn to them, and we realize that they're not there. And at that moment, I think we all think about the people that they love the most and how incredibly difficult and much more difficult it is for them. Tonight, I want to speak about the Herndon family member that I knew that, I didn't know Mr. Angel, unfortunately. Jeff was a valued colleague and a new friend. I didn't know him long. We ran for council together, and we came on board together, and we learned our jobs together. And he was an eager learner. He was fascinated by everything that had to do with transportation, as you probably know if you know Jeff. He was a kind person. He was intellectually curious. He was eager to learn. He was eager to teach. He had an unexpectedly sneaky sense of humor, which I didn't discover until recently, and he was open to everybody. He wanted to help everybody. He wanted to understand what they needed and help them. He loved Herndon. He loved to drive that cute little sports car and spend time with Paula Furman, who is the love of his life. Most of all, he... get dinner. So it was either Jimmy's, The Breeze, Sully's. I gave him several options. And about five minutes later, he comes back and says, "How about Anita's at 5:15?" That's a compromise. I can live with that. So, get to Anita's, and we're talking, and I, you know, he was, he liked to do certain things in a certain way, and I was like, "Anita's was different." And then all of a sudden, he, the waitress comes over and goes, "The usual with the ginger ale?" He's like, "Yes, absolutely. What would you like, Bill?" So, and, and these are the things I'm going to miss, because he truly loved this town. There's no doubt about that. I would, you know, I appreciated his, his zeal and how much he truly loved serving Herndon. You know, I would go to meetings with him, and he would, you know, ask me questions that I never even thought of thinking, because I don't, you know, and he, he has, and, you know, he has a project manager's mind, and I certainly don't. And it was that perspective that would give me some unique angles on how to think about things. So, the diocese has lost someone truly remarkable. And I can also tell you, in his love of planes, his love of history, you know, in the historical society, and the, the signs, the sign committee, he was so proud of that. And he'll be missed.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
As our Town Manager just mentioned, we lost two very valued members of the Town of Herndon family this weekend. And their loss affects us all in many ways, and we continue to learn new ways to mourn their loss as something we think that we'd like to talk to them about comes up, and we turn to them, and we realize that they're not there. And at that moment, I think we all think about the people that they love the most and how incredibly difficult and much more difficult it is for them. Tonight, I want to speak about the Herndon family member that I knew that, I didn't know Mr. Angel, unfortunately. Jeff was a valued colleague and a new friend. I didn't know him long. We ran for council together, and we came on board together, and we learned our jobs together. And he was an eager learner. He was fascinated by everything that had to do with transportation, as you probably know if you know Jeff. He was a kind person. He was intellectually curious. He was eager to learn. He was eager to teach. He had an unexpectedly sneaky sense of humor, which I didn't discover until recently, and he was open to everybody. He wanted to help everybody. He wanted to understand what they needed and help them. He loved Herndon. He loved to drive that cute little sports car and spend time with Paula Furman, who is the love of his life. Most of all, he loved to fly his plane, which I'm told he built himself. He spoke about that plane often. It seemed to define what he loved and cared about. And because tonight, I'd like to say something to remember, Jeff, I'd like to read a brief poem written by John Gillespie McGee Jr., who was a pilot who died in World War II while serving the Canadian Royal Air Force. It's often quoted when people, when pilots pass away, because it speaks to the reason that they love flying so much. And if you were with us last night at Jimmy's, you probably heard Pastor Stephen Smith-Cobs recite it. It goes like this. "I've slipped the surly bonds of earth and danced the skies on laughter silvered wings. Skyward I've climbed and joined the tumbling mirth of sunsplit clouds and done a hundred things you have not dreamed of. Wheeled and soared and swung high in the sunlit silence. Hovering there, I've chased the shouting wind along and flung my eager craft through footless halls of air. Up, up, the long delirious burning blue, I've topped the windswept heights with easy grace, where lark nor even eagle flew. And while with silent lifting mind I've trod, the high untrespassed sanctity of space put out my hand and touched the face of God." And this is how I will remember Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Olom.
Thank you. Since, I guess, Friday, the 30th of April, when I learned about Jeff's tragic accident, it's just been a roller coaster until his passing from the injuries last Saturday. So, it just makes us all reflect on how precious life is, and we never know when, when our next day might be our last. And with the passing of Angel, it's, it's a lot to take in one time, and I know the whole community is mourning from, especially the staff at DPW that were close to Mr. Angel and all of us. I've known Jeff since before the skate park arrived. That was when I first met Jeff, prior to either of us being on the Town Council, and he was getting very involved with the community. So, it's very sad when we see someone go, but he will be remembered as well as Angel. Every time it snows, I'll think of him.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, I met Jeff at Panera. I don't know, but he did, he did meet at the Panera in Herndon as well. Maybe because I'm a really big coffee fan, so I sort of forced his hand maybe and said, "Can we just meet at the Panera?" So, there's so many things I just really enjoyed about working with Jeff, and I've also known Jeff several years. I was trying to remember when I first met him. He's been such an active member of the community for so long, I can't really remember exactly when. He ran for council three times, and he was proud, I mentioned that because he was proud of that, right? And the first two unsuccessfully, and I think that speaks to his persistence and how important this was, that he wanted to be a member of this body, that he wanted to represent the town. And he worked really hard in 2016, right? He had retired from his, his government job and spent a lot of time knocking on doors and told me just recently, because of course, this is a campaign year, he's like, "Gentlemen, I do the same thing. I'm ready. I've got my whole schedule planned out." Like, he was, I mean, again, with the program manager, he was very structured and, which I love. That speaks to me as well. So, we, we talked about that just recently. Jeff, I considered him sort of a policy wonk in some ways, particularly with certain things that were really, really important to him. I love that, you know, Herndon's a town of four square miles, and Jeff liked to consider himself the representative of the west part of the town, right, of our little teeny town, because he lived kind of on the, closer to the wester side, saying, "I want to make sure I represent that part." And the fact that he was, where he lived was closer to where the, actually, the CIT metro station will be, more so than the, the Herndon metro station. So he really, he just had a great perspective, and he was a really valuable voice and, and asset on the council. I loved that he really liked the, the details, and transportation was really critical to him, right? All of us have had conversations with Jeff about transportation, and, you know, we're excited that Amazon might come to town, but what if Amazon comes to town? Let's make sure we've talked about this, and have we thought about all these details? So I liked that he brought those conversations. Certainly, other people mentioned the historic signs and being part of that committee, and I love that that legacy lives on, because certainly, for all the folks that were involved in that, and Jeff being one of them, that was, I think, a really important, important feature for the town. Right before tonight's meeting, I was at Friday Night Live's volunteer appreciation. So as Friday Night Live's about to kick off in a few weeks, and Jeff's been an active volunteer at Friday Night Live for the past several years, you could see him in the bright yellow shirt as a marshal. So I spoke to George and Laura Price tonight, and Doug Downer, and several of the other volunteers who just wanted to express their sympathy and, and just tell me stories about Jeff. George Price in particular just spoke about how, how much he's like, "I relied on Jeff. I was, I need him at Friday Night Live." He was a really important part of Friday Night Live and a really important friend to the Prices and to others in that room tonight. And I think, again, since we've already read the volunteer proclamation, it, that absolutely is what Jeff was as well. He was such an active part of the community and an active volunteer. I will miss, I will miss those things. I will miss Jeff's contribution and his structure and his thoroughness and his details and his introversion to my extroversion. I will miss all those things about Jeff and, and what he brings to the council. And I will end on, so, the one thing that gives me a little peace is that, so it was four or five weeks ago, I had a conversation with Jeff that, it was one of those, like, I called him, I had something we were, we needed to talk about, and it ended up being one of those really meaningful conversations you have with someone, that you end up saying other things, and we, we ended up talking about things that I hadn't shared with Jeff, he hadn't shared with me, and we just had this more personal conversation than we had had in a long time. And that was only a few weeks ago, and it, it's so meaningful to me now as I think about that conversation, and I'm really thankful that just the timing worked, that I had that conversation with him. And so I will just say, if there's people in your life that you feel like, "I have some loose ends, or I should say that to them," my advice is, you should say that to them. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jeff and I learned a lot from each other, because a couple people mentioned his, his structure and his list, and you would go to lunch, and he always had an agenda, and you had to go in order. And that is about as opposite of how I roll as it, as it is. So we both had to really try to, to meet each other halfway so that we didn't drive each other crazy at these meetings. You know, nothing prepares anyone for a sudden loss of a family member or a colleague. And the piece of Jeff's life that made him a public figure is, of course, serving on the council alongside of us. And, you know, there's no, we hope we're approaching this the right way. We, there's no rulebook for how to, how to appropriately publicly mourn your colleague. The last time a sitting member of council in the Town of Herndon passed away was in 1918. It was literally 100 years ago. I've been in touch with, with Jeff's family almost every day since the accident. They are fiercely protecting his privacy, and we are, we are, we are working hard, and we, we're doing the best that we can, hoping that we are honoring him in a public way that is meaningful and that he, he deserves, while also not bringing his family into the public limelight. I've helped shield them from the press this week. It's just, it's, it's just been, it's just been quite a week. Opening up the meeting tonight, walking in, and thank you to the Clerk's office for making sure we had flowers and an appropriate, you know, memorial for him here. I, I hope, I hope it's the right thing to do. We, walking in here this evening and seeing those flowers and having to open the meeting the way it is, one of the hardest things I've done, sitting in this chair. So, I want to thank my colleagues for the support that, you know, we've given each other over the past week. Our grief is nothing compared to his family and Paula's, and we are going to stick together and remember Jeff. The transportation piece, I don't know who's going to take that on now, because nobody, I mean, Jeff was always telling me things that I didn't know about transportation. He asked me questions I didn't know the answer to. Didn't you say that? And I'm like, "Wow, I should know that by now. I've been doing this a while." And I'll never forget, one time, the Town Manager and I were coming back from someplace, and, you know, Jeff had the Herndon Parkway Committee, and he was always talking about traffic, and the Town Manager and I are sitting there at the stoplight, and Jeff drove by and was like, "Look, there goes Jeff on the Herndon Parkway." And it was, it was just, it was just fun. So, and I really do mean it. I'm so grateful that the tribe was here tonight, because I, that really helped make me feel better in this seat tonight. So, Jeff, you'll be missed. Next up is comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item? You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. When the red light comes on, please wrap up. If you are here for one of our advertised public hearings, this is not the time to come forward. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? No? See, every time I ask if anybody wants to speak, people start leaving. So, okay. Okay, well, okay, come on down, sir. I knew there'd be somebody if I paused long enough.
So, I feel obligated to say that I come down and speak to the...
Say your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Jason, Tamambro. I work for Art Space. I feel obligated to come down and speak about the power of community after tonight's council meeting. Realistically, after the last few weeks, working with people like Elizabeth and all the families involved with growing kids, and people like Carol Haddock and Friends of Running Me and the other people around town, I feel like I have to say that when we come together, there's some real power in it, and I've been witness to it. I mean, there are volunteers in town, like you talked about, that have changed my life. And this exhibit, if there ever was one, for me to come and embarrass myself in front of Town Council, to say, "Come out and see, this is the one." The power of community and volunteers. You've got one of the OG volunteers right here, Mersha, and people like Signe, who gave me a chance at, at being involved in this. I feel like we really have to remember that. And, you know, we have a wonderful exhibit right now that preaches to that, and I feel like I have to say that, and I, I feel like I have to remind us that we have a, a viewing of Sister Lee on Friday for, I hope that you guys can promote that and push people to come out and see it. And I hope that this is one of those exhibits where you guys can, and it's evident through these proclamations, so I want to say thank you and just speak to it. And the Town of Herndon, I don't live here, but I've been working here for almost two years. Thank you, Signe. It's overwhelming, and it really can change things and change a perspective, and if we do that for one person, then it's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Thank you. So our first public hearing this evening, thank you for waiting through all that, of all nights, right? But I appreciate you, you being here, is Resolution 18-G16 to consider a special exception application SE-1801 for an accessory dwelling unit for an in-law suite at 830 Eldon Street. And I'll call on Bryce Perry for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just pull up the presentation. There we go. Okay, special exception case number 18-01. This is a special exception to permit an accessory dwelling unit within an accessory structure for a property located at 830 Eldon Street. This is the aerial of that. The area was pointing towards the property. It is on the north side of Eldon Street, located just west of its intersection with Gray Street. The proposed ADU, accessory dwelling unit, I'll refer to it as ADU, would be for an in-law suite and would be located in the rear of the property in the location of an existing accessory structure. Property is owned R10 Residential. That's a single-family detached residential zoning district, and the land use designation per the land use map in our comprehensive plan is neighborhood conservation. All the surrounding properties share that zoning district and share that land use designation. Going down to the street level here in the presentation, this shows the property. We have the principal structure, the house and foreground, and then the existing accessory structure in the rear, as I mentioned here. The proposed accessory dwelling unit would be located in a new accessory structure and would require the demolition of that existing accessory structure. The proposed new accessory structure, which is shown here, this is the, the concept design for it, the floor plans and the property plaque showing where it would be located. It is approximately 1,140 square feet. It's two stories. It would have a bedroom and a bathroom, a kitchen and dining area, and a living room. And according to the applicant, it would be designed to accommodate a future conversion to a garage. When staff reviews special exceptions for ADUs, we really rely on, on two sections of the zoning ordinance. That's Section 78-155.3E, which includes the standards to consider for special exceptions, and Section 78-80-4 subsection A, and that has the criteria to consider for accessory dwelling units. Staff reviewed both of those sections closely and believes that this special exception as proposed complies with those standards and those, and that criteria. And Planning Commission did agree with that assessment. Staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval. However, there are a number of conditions. There are 12 conditions in all, and most of them, I'd say, are standard conditions for special exceptions for accessory dwelling units. I didn't go through the conditions at the work session. I'd like to go through them briefly here.
Thank you.
The first one is that the, that the application as proposed remains, or rather, the accessory dwelling unit as developed and maintained remains in substantial conformance with the special exception as presented this evening and as approved by the Town Council if approved. The second, the next condition is that the, the ADU shall comply with all building and zoning standards. The next condition limits this, the ADU to one ADU per the, per lot. The next one limits the size of the ADU to the size being proposed with this application. The next one limits the number of bedrooms to the one bedroom being proposed here. The next condition puts a limit on the occupants, so ADUs are only permitted when the occupants are persons that are at least 62 years of age or older, or persons with physical, mental, or cognitive disabilities. The next condition requires a minimum of one parking space for the ADU. Next condition requires that the ADU not be sold separately. The next one requires compliance with all health, safety, sanitation, and building code regulations. The next condition requires a zoning inspection permit prior to occupancy and requires annual inspections by both zoning and building officials. The next one links the special exception to the property owner, not the property, not the land, so if there's a change in ownership, the, the special exception would be terminated. And the last condition is requiring that the food preparation area, which is the fancy zoning term for the kitchen, be removed prior to the change in ownership. And that's, that's all 12, and that's my presentation. Available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
Yes, ma'am. My questions mainly have to do with the stuff that you just mentioned. I see one of the requirements is G, parking. There should be a minimum of one off-street parking space with convenient access to the street for the accessory dwelling unit. Is that something that's required of, I mean, when you're building a new house, you, you specify how many street, on-street parking spaces there are?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So, we, the zoning ordinance has off-street parking standards for every type of, of use we have in town, and for single-family detached homes, it's, it's two spaces. When an ADU is added, it's an additional space. They meet those standards, and, and the slide here where you see the curb cut, which is actually a, a public alley, they have a, a wide asphalted area in front of the, in front of the existing accessory structure that actually accommodates more than three cars.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Perry. This is a public hearing that I should have already opened, so I'll open the public hearing. And I would like to invite the applicant forward if you'd like to speak. If you don't want to speak, that's fine, too, but you have your opportunity if you would like to. See, she didn't leave.
No.
No.
She wanted to, but...
Address. Okay, Tracy Glazier, 830 Eldon. Thank you so much. Mom and dad are here.
I'm so proud of this town. So thank you that tonight, what they were able to see for the first time really means a lot to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've got Kleenex if you need them. Thank, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this special exception item? Okay, thank you. So seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Mr. McKenna.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass Resolution 18-G16 to consider special exception SE number 18-01 at 830 Eldon Street.
Second. All right. The motion was made to approve made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Mr. McKenna?
I understand 100% why you had that emotion. I had, I had to take care of my parents, and I know how difficult, like, I had a, my parents put an extension on their house because my father wanted to be close with his mother. That was very important to him. It meant a lot to him. And it was always the play area when I was growing up. And then when my mom and dad got sick, it became the apartment for my mom and dad. And I know the reasons why you're doing this, and I think they're admirable. So if it's good enough for community, community development, if it's good enough for Planning Board, it's definitely good enough for me. So I wish you well, and I'm all for it. And God bless you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, it is all about community tonight, isn't it? So welcome to the town of Herndon. We're excited. And this is one of those simple things that government should make things easier for people to stay in place, you know, age in place, live, live near family. So we're excited to welcome you to town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs.
Well, I was tempted to suggest that we deny it because she made us cry, but I'm going to support it anyway.
That wasn't really hard tonight, I don't think. Yeah. Thank you. Ms. Olem?
Yeah, one of the concerns I had about this, which I voiced at the work session, but they are all nicely outlined, because we don't necessarily want people putting places in their backyard to start a hotel. So this obviously isn't one. We've got the safety spots in there. So should you leave, then you put it back to a garage. But I think it's great because someone else might move in, and they're 30 years old, and they just want to rent it out to 10 other people. So this is, this is a great use for that. Thank you.
I concur with my colleagues. And this is the right thing to do. I hope that it works well for you guys. And we just welcome you to town. This was quite, this was quite an introduction to town tonight, I'll tell you. Thank you. So with that, I will call the question on the motion made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you. Great. So thank you. The next public hearing item is ordinance 18-0-10 to consider zoning ordinance text amendment ZODA 1702 to remove the development provisions for the gateway business option and to amend the use chart and various provisions for planned development in the transit-oriented core zoning district. So comments received by council on this item have been entered into the record. I'd like to open the public hearing, and I'm going to call on Bryce Perry for the staff report.
Thank you. Zoning ordinance text amendment, case number 17-02, as presented this evening, would amend the planned development transit-oriented core zoning district, that's the PDTOC, which is the zoning designation for the nine properties that are closest to the metro station south of Herndon Parkway and east of Van Buren Street. The amendments that are being proposed improves the ordinance, specifically the use charts within the PDTOC ordinance and the, and various development standards. And, and staff is, staff is increasingly using that ordinance as we get to develop interest and we get development applications for the metro area, which was really the impetus for moving forward with this ordinance at this time. The, as I mentioned, the proposed language improves the ordinance, and it does so by enhancing clarity throughout. It does infuse some design flexibility for development applications. It strengthens its requirements in several key areas. And probably more important, most importantly, it aligns the ordinance more appropriately with the principles and the intent of the, of what came out of the H-TOP, the Herndon Transit Oriented Core Area Plan. The, let's see, the town council initiated this ZODA back in, on September 12th of 2017, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the ZODA as presented here this evening at its March 5th, 2018, public hearing. If you're wondering why there was the six-month gap there between the two, if you recall back at initiation, there were several concerns raised by the property owners. So in addressing all of those concerns, staff worked with the individual property owners and their representatives. And through several meetings and several iterations of the, of the ZODA, and several continuances with the Planning Commission, we arrived at the version that's being presented to you all this evening. This is the version that staff is recommending for approval, and this is the version that the Planning Commission recommended for approval as well. And staff truly believes that this not only addresses the concerns that were raised by the, the property owners at initiation, but it addressed some other issues that came up throughout the process that really may not have even been achieved, or understood, or arrived at if we didn't have that collaborative dynamic that we enjoyed with stakeholders. That really concludes my report. I haven't gone into any of the details of the specific zoning language like I did at the work session, but I can certainly answer any questions that you have on the details if you'd like. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions of staff on this one? All right, you're off the hook for now, Bryce. Thank you. So this is a public hearing, so I'll call on comments from the audience. State your name and address for the record. And Mr. Murphy, when the red light comes on, try to wrap up.
Mayor Merkel, members of the town council. I am Shane Murphy, law firm of Reed Smith, 7900 Tyson's One Place, Tyson's, Virginia. I would like to start out to offer my condolences on Councilman Davidson, Jeff's loss. I didn't know him as well as you did, but I've known him for about a decade, and he's certainly been gone, he's gone too soon. So now for the unemotional part of the presentation, I'm here on behalf of Stanley Martin Homes, on behalf of their interests in Metro Square. We have had several discussions with staff, with the town attorney, and with the Planning Commission, and we support the changes to the, to the proposed ZODA that have been made. Our initial concerns were that there may be some, some legal nonconformities if the language were passed as is. Staff has addressed those issues. They've also addressed some issues we have regarding utilities and utility boxes being at grade versus underground. So again, I would ask you to, to please support this amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this Okay, then I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Anyone? Mr. McKenna?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 18-0-10.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Mr. McKenna?
Just a great job with the, the staff for working on that. Remember Mr. Murphy's concerns a few months back, and to hear that they were amended and taken care of really makes me feel good. So I want to thank you for working with them to mitigate all that thing, all those things. So I'm very excited about that. That was my one reservation, but perfectly fine.
Thank you. Ms., Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes. Yeah, I would just echo that. Thank you very much. There is a lot of detail to this. And I know we talked about it last week, and just really looking through that of what's been edited and cleaned up. And I love when we streamline government and process. So there's a lot of good adjustments to this. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Other discussion on the motion. Well, I appreciate the work that went into this, because I know when this first came up, there were some real concern from some of the property owners and landowners over in, that would be affected by this. And I applaud the town staff and those, the representatives of all those different property owners for working together and getting us to something that is amenable to both, both parties, because we want it to work for the town, but it's also got to work for the people who own the land. So I'm really grateful to everybody who made that happen, because I know it wasn't easy. So with that, I will call the question on the motion made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that motion carries. Okay. Next up is the budget. This is for the items 13 through 15. The next three public hearings relate to the town manager's proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. It includes an ordinance to levy real estate taxes, a fiscal planning resolution to adopt the budget, and an ordinance to implement the fiscal year 2019 budget, establish a pay plan, and reserve ongoing and capital funding for this fiscal year. I'll first open the public hearings and call on the town manager to outline the proposed budget on all three items concurrently. Then we will open a separate public hearing on the ordinance levying taxes, followed by concurrent public hearings on the remaining two items. The real estate tax ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of council, which is five, and requires a roll call vote. The, the other, let's see, fiscal planning requires a majority of those present in voting. And the appropriation ordinance requires a majority of the council, which is four, and requires a roll call vote. Comments received from individuals on the budget have, previously have been entered into the record. And I just had a panic attack thinking I didn't have our disclosures, but I do. So bear with me. We all have disclosures, and we all have to read them individually into the record. So it's going to sound like an echo chamber in here for just a few minutes. But I will begin. For the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by those organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and the town attorney. And I'll just start with Mr. McKenna and go down the...
I went last, last time, but I'll go first. That's okay.
I'll keep in score. I'll see.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate, participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
And last but not least, Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. Additionally, until April 30th, 2017, I was the executive director of Arts Herndon. I do not currently hold any position with Arts Herndon, paid or unpaid. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney. Thank you, ma'am. I will open the public hearing and call on the town manager to give us your presentation on the budget. Lay it on us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope this is the one item that doesn't, it caused tears to flow, either for you or for me.
We'll see.
So just, just to recap, for, for those watching at home, and those that don't understand the process, this process starts back in December, when the council gives the manager budget guidance, for which I pass along to staff, and we begin to craft a budget. It continues through January and February, when we meet with each one of you individually to talk about your personal priorities, to talk about what, what we're trying to get accomplished in the budget. And we start crafting it and fine tuning it. And it culminates with us releasing a proposed budget to you at the end of March for us to discuss. We discussed it fully last week. Let me just go back and recap what we discussed last week for those watching at home and those in the audience tonight. So let's recap the budget priorities and guidance that you gave to me back in December. Number one, and first and foremost, and this is something that I can attest that the staff is not confused on, you are very interested in funding activities that will advance the 2035 vision. This is very near and dear to you. Up here, you see some of the tenants that we're working on currently, and we are funding next year. We talk about the sustainability plan, the downtown redevelopment plan. We talk about the Arts Center. We talk about focusing on technology and streamlining business process. And this budget attempts to do these items that we're talking about here. Also, you wanted us to fund activities that will demonstrate a commitment to an investment in the town employees. You wanted to make sure they were getting paid market rates, that we, that we did not have the lowest paid workforce in, in the region. You wanted to make sure we were training our people appropriately. They were getting, getting the best tools and equipment, their, that their environments were stable, and that they enjoyed coming to work for all of those reasons, to provide better services to the citizens of the town of Herndon. Finally, you also wanted me to work towards updating budgetary policy. Things like emphasizing lifecycle and normalizing how we, how we replace equipment, how we do major building maintenance, how we do our, our vehicles. Were all very important to you. You wanted me to continue working on our financial policies. One of the elements behind this is we're going to be doing a lot of borrowing over the next couple of years, both in the Water and Sewer Fund and in the General Fund. We needed to make sure that our policies were ensuring the AAA bond rating that would get us the lowest rates possible for that borrowing. You also wanted me to work on streamlining the budget document. It's all trying to make it more readable and understandable for the average citizen of Herndon to be able to pick up and, and, and see where their money is being spent. And we were able to do that this year, streamlining about 130 pages out of the document, focusing on more graphs, more charts, things that would make it a little more readable. It's a work in progress. And as I briefed you all earlier this year, it'd probably take about three years to get us where we need to be. This is the first step in that direction to make this budget truly approachable for those that want to pick it up. You also wanted to work on performance measurements. That, too, is we're starting this year as a three-year project infused this into the, into the workflows of the various departments. Oftentimes, in performance measurements, you will see people will report what they gather, and not anything that's meaningful. We're trying to make sure our performance measurements are meaningful to show you how we are doing as a staff in meeting your missions and your goals and your objectives, and how we're servicing our customers. So we're working on that. And that, again, is part of the three-year process. And finally, we want to take a look at the, the budget capacity. Where do we have room in the current budget to meet emerging demands, to meet current demands, to meet some growing demands, without looking at things like tax increases or things like that? That was very near and dear to you, and that's what we attempted to do in this budget. So with that, let's talk about the budget overview. This chart up here shows you the changes in the various elements of the budget over the course of next year. Some of the numbers that will jump out to you, because it looks very, very, everything looks pretty even keeled except for three things up there. Number one is downtown parking. We'll get into that in more depth. This relates to, we're building a garage. Number two is capital projects. This is mainly grant funding driving this, and we'll talk about, more about that later. And so across, in Water and Sewer, we are looking at adding additional capacity next year and bonding for it. We'll get into more detail there as well. But across the board, the number that I really want you to focus on right now is the General Fund. We're talking about a 1.7% increase of the General Fund, which is less than the CPI. So we are under the CPI in growth. So we are under the CPI in growth. When we look at our tax situation, the real property assessed value increased by just under 3%. This includes all our new construction, the revaluations and the new construction. Residential property was up at about three and a half. Commercial property, just over two and a quarter. Residential properties comprise 56% of our assessed tax base, 44% for commercial properties. This is where we're sitting for this year. Again, that number sometimes fluctuates. At one point several years ago, we were closer to 50/50. Now we're seeing more residential coming online than we are commercial. The real estate tax rate proposed in this budget is the same as last year and the year before, and the year before that, and the year before that. It's, we're proposing a rate of 26.5 cents per hundred dollars assessed value. The increase in levy is roughly about $328,000. That's, that's across all residences coming in more, that's the additional residential tax coming into the town's treasury is $328,000. That is based on revaluations primarily. One penny of real estate tax rate is equivalent to approximately $445,000 in tax revenue. If I can just point out, this is something that a lot of people do ask, what is the equalization rate? The equalization rate for this year is, we computed at approximately .2627. So about a quarter, just a little under a quarter of a percentage point lower than where it is today. Keeping in mind, last year was about a quarter higher. So over the past two years, our assessed value, our, of our actual, without the new construction, is roughly the same as it was three years ago. Average residential property values, real, average real estate tax bill is probably the more, more important one of these bullets up here. We're looking at approximately $1,000 per year based on the 2650 per hundred. So that's approximately a $33, $34 increase over last year on average. This graphic shows the bell curve distribution of those increases, what the percentage changes, increases and decreases over all of the town's residential revaluations. What you're seeing is a modest increase, air, that's the middle of the bell curve with a fairly standard distribution on either side. So again, we're talking about not a, a growing tax base. It's, it's sitting right at about a couple of percentage points is what we talked about earlier. Other tax, other taxes that we're projecting, transient occupancy tax looks to be, we're estimating about 3% higher. Meals tax, about three and a half percent higher. Bank stock tax, B poll taxes. Back, B poll, we're look, we're, we're taking a little bit more of a closer look at that. It's a volatile tax, as I keep reminding everybody. We don't like to put a lot of, a lot of credence and spend that money because it can go away quickly or fluctuate very quickly depending on the economy and business decisions driven by our various businesses, whether they stay in town or not. So that is a very, that's a tax I'm always, I'm very watchful of. And we, we approach a little bit differently than the rest of our tax rates. Cigarette tax, communication sales tax, those again, small taxes, very little fluctuation in communication, sales and use taxes. V dot street maintenance, we're looking at about an 8% increase in V dot street maintenance coming into the budget for next year. In addition to the guidance you were giving me, when we sat down and started looking at the budget as a staff, we came back and started talking to you all about various things that were emerging that we needed to make sure we were addressing. One of them was to prepare our financials so that we can go to, to look at our bond rating before we go out to borrow next year. We needed to, we also had a nagging problem with the use of seasonal employees. We had a seasonal employee base that wasn't in line with relevant policies and IRS law, and we had to address that problem in this budget. Also, we had some macro level issues. How we use, how we use reserves, how we did lifecycle maintenance. These were, how we use general fund to fund the CIP were all issues that have been nagging budgets. And we wanted to take a better look at how we approached those things. So we tried to address some of these things in this budget as well. The general fund, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at a 1.7% increase. So we're looking at $36.2 million general fund for next year. We recommend funding 265 regular positions, all funds. This is an increase of 4.72 full-time equivalents. This is based on some of the seasonal things that we were attempting, attempting to address. We're looking for a paralegal that's part-time, a personal trainer that's part-time, removing a head lifeguard to a full-time position. We're also looking at adding two utility maintenance workers as part-time as opposed to seasonal. As, as one of our, one of the elements of the strategy to address the seasonal employee issue that we've talked about several times over the past couple of months. Some of the other things in personnel, we're very fortunate. We've had no increase in health insurance for the third year. I think we're probably the only organization in America that might be able to claim this. It's, this is something that when Tanya came into my office with that, delivering that news, I, I laughed. I thought she was kidding with me. I asked her to go back and check again, and then go back and check again. I was shocked to see that, but that is the case. VRS, with, with your general retirement system, redid its actuarials. We're looking at a slight decrease in our contributions to VRS. This, this number will hold for the next two years, this year and next year. I don't think I'm lucky enough to hope for a fourth year in, in health, but I know we'll get a second year at the, with this VRS number. In this budget, we are proposing a 2% payable performance increase adjusted for all regular status town employees. That means the band will be somewhere around 1.25, 1.5 to 2.5, 2.75. That's something that Tanya will play with when we go to implement. We're looking at a 1.25% cost of living adjustment to all pay categories across the board, all pay, all, all, that will be directly into the employee's paycheck July 1. We're also looking at 1% pay adjustment for any seasonals that remain. Just because we were working on seasonals, we're working on the seasonals that seem never to leave the payroll was who we were addressing. We still have the need for seasonals. We have people that do work for six months at a time and go off the payroll. Those are truly seasonal employees. And we're looking at 1% pay adjustment for those employees that remain in the seasonal category. Some of the large operations and maintenance cost drivers, just so I can paint the picture for you, six, we are a service organization. 60% of our, our operations are going to be in personnel costs. Then our next highest is our O and M costs. And these is, this is what we're talking about here. Some of the large drivers are focused on public works operations, things like landfill charges, repaving. We've got the Herndon Festival, which we do recover revenue off the Herndon Festival, electricity, repairing our buildings, mowing our grass. These are all large ticket items that we spend each year to run this organization. We're looking at operating capital this year. We're looking to replace four vehicles at, at the Herndon Police Department. We're looking at continue to finish funding the two-way radio project upgrade at the shop. We're looking at some GIS work. Again, as I talked at the work session last year, Salt Brian was near and dear to my heart because I know personally, if I know a snowstorm or an ice event is coming, and I'm driving down the street and I don't see those four white lines, I think that locality has fallen down on the job. So instead of going to Fairfax and sitting in line behind Fairfax's vehicles to get Salt Brian, we'll go ahead and install a machine ourselves so that we can make sure that we are providing that level of service to our citizens. Some of the other things, we're looking at adding additional recycling carts, repairing some vehicles. We're getting some additional equipment in the gymnasium at, at the community center. We're looking to replace one of our refuse packers, 116. It's going to be on a lease purchase. It's a quarter million dollar vehicle. So we're going to do some lease purchases to help us get into the position of getting our lifecycle maintenance more predictable. Some capital improvements that we're looking at this year, a lot to do with Van Buren Street and Elden Monroe, Herndon Parkway and Spring Street. We have bumped up the sidewalks and minor trails project from two years to next year because we want that done because it directly is directly affected with the downtown. These are trails leading to the downtown, sidewalks in the downtown. We want to get that done in advance of the downtown being done. So we, we bumped this project up a year. Capital improvements for next year, we're going to design an interior and art center. We're going to do some major road repaving. The police have some serious issues with some, some elements of security that I really don't want to go to, into in public. We're looking at addressing those facility security issues next year as well. Some of the other things, Sterling Road improvements, bicycling facilities, Brady Court, tennis court renovations are all some other issues that we're doing next year as part of our capital improvement program. So let's pivot a little bit to the water and sewer fund. We're looking at a 58.8% increase in this, in this fund. Again, as we're going to discuss here in a second, it's all about the availability that's driving that number. But first, right now, in the budget that you have before you, we're looking at keeping sewer, water and sewer service rates at the current FYAT levels they exist today. We're keeping the sewer lateral replacement program same. We're keeping sewer availability fees the same in this budget. Same thing with water, as we just discussed. So what is driving the cost? Well, the first bullet on this page is what's driving the cost. We're looking at buying an additional million gallons per day capacity into our water system at the price of $6.5 million. This will be bonded. It'll be bonds paid for by the water and sewer fund, by availability fees in the water and sewer fund primarily. That is what's driving that pretty large increase in this fund for next year. We're also looking to do some sewer main relying and manhole maintenance. This is critical. We have spent a lot of time working on our sewer lines. Inf, getting infiltration and inflows into that from groundwater causes our, our treatment costs to go up. So it's very important for us to go through, identify where those problems are with these, with these sewer mains and fix them and get proactive. Staff is very proactive with this, with this I and I program. And we want to continue to do so. We also, if you note on here, we have a sewer capacity purchase, $80,000. We still need to study that question. Again, as we talked about in the past with discussion items back in the fall, this number, this is a 30-plus million dollar purchase that we're going to have to make in the coming years. We want to make sure that we're planning appropriately for it. And that's what's in what you see before you. Golf course fund, we're looking at a little slight decrease in the golf course fund. It doesn't mean Gene's not doing well. Gene's doing very well. Gene is running a great shop up there. This is what this is, last year, we did buy some, some equipment that we're not having to buy this year. That's what the, that's what's being reflected here. He's buying one utility vehicle. Last year, we were buying mowers. We were buying, we were buying things to apply the, the product to the, to the soil so that the grass grows appropriately. We're not doing that this year. This is, so his, his fund is pretty tight. He runs a great ship. And it's pretty much status quo for him. The cemetery fund, we're looking at 3.2% increase in the cemetery fund. This is driven off a conversion of a part-time to a full-time person. And we're going to do a couple of operating capital projects. We have some retaining wall problems in the collar barium that we're going to, to address. And they also need a mulcher and mower to keep their, be able to keep the grounds clean and crisp and, and make sure that we don't get many phone calls from, from loved ones. Downtown parking fund, this is a big increase. That's because we're looking at issuing bonds associated with finding a garage in the downtown. So we're looking at the bond issuance. We're looking at creating capacity for the debt service. And we have to still maintain the other municipal lots we have in town, the Station Street and James, at the James Building. So as you look at the capital improvements program, and we're going to discuss the CIP, especially the out years in a few weeks, but currently for next year, the CIP, you're seeing that this is how we're paying for it. We, we're, we're paying about 7% of it in proffers, 3.7% in meals tax, bond revenues. Bonds, 8.3%. General fund transfer, about an 8.6. I want to draw your attention to the last line. 71.8% of our CIP is funded by other people's money. It's coming from us, from other governments in, in, in the form of a grant. Also, we're looking in the budget to codify some new, some changes to the financial policies. We've worked with the town's financial advisor. We've identified some areas we need to improve. We want to amend financial policies based on current best practices and recently updated credit rating agency criteria. Again, we've got to go take a look at our credit, to look at our bond rating before we go out to borrow. So to ensure that we keep, we keep that triple A into, in play, we want to make sure we're doing the right things leading into that. The first one is, triple A bond rated agencies today have a 20% general fund balance policy. The town historically, in the past few years, has had 20%. It's time now to codify that policy and make sure that it is in there. Bond rating agencies can, can be certain that we are a well fiscally managed organization and we have resources in the bank. It goes, it's that same old thing. You can't borrow money unless you have money. So it's showing that to the rating agencies that we do have the money. We are prudent in our fiscal management. And this policy goes a long way to that. We're updating some debt policies, some old debt policies that aren't applicable, that are, that are theoretical and, but not practical, are getting pulled out of play. We're also looking at updating some budget transfer policies, both to allow the, the directors have more flexibility to operate their departments, but also to help us get some of the capacity in the budget. We want to do fund-based contingency funding. So the general fund would have a contingency for which if we do need to pivot and do new projects we didn't anticipate, we need to do other things. We have some flexibility to meet the emerging demands because again, what you have before you is a plan. Plans rarely last beyond, once you implement them. You have to continuously reevaluate, reassess, and be able to pivot and change and be agile to move to other things. Having a better contingency policy will allow us to do that. Just to recap, what you see in this budget will fund your 2035 vision for next year. It will fund activities that demonstrate a commitment to your employees. It will continue working towards updating our budgetary policies. This thing, this budget that you have before you, prepare financials to maximize the town bond rating. It's going to bring employee policies in line with all relevant policies and laws. And it will address macro level budget issues like reserve, usage, lifecycle maintenance, and general fund revenue and how we fund our CIP. So with that, I will take any questions you may have about next year's proposed budget. Nobody's crying. That's good. You're asleep.
Not yet.
You're asleep, but you're not crying.
We're not snoring.
Mr. McKenna?
First of all, great job again this year. Really appreciate the staff's work on this. Our two-by-twos are really good meetings. So appreciate the interaction. There's a lot of work going into this before we have this. But one of the questions I asked last week, I want to ask again, just because I think it's important that the people in the audience and also the people who are watching on Herndon Television are watching. But what are the things that I, I, you know, we talked about this last week. I was saying, as an example, I know health insurance moving forward can be a concern. I call them Maylock's moments. So what are the Maylock's moments that you have, the things that keep you up at night? Because again, I think to understand a budget, it's not just, you know, the body of work because the end result is of course fixed and kind of static whereas everything else is more linear. But for people to understand, what are the things that are important moving forward that we should be looking for? Because I think it's important that the people, the town of Herndon should be looking for in regards to public comments as well.
If you look in the budget towards the front, we have a series of graphs and charts about our revenues over the past, I want to say since 2011 might be, or 2012, 2010, that, that timeframe. And all of those revenue curves are relatively flat. They are, we're not growing our current revenue base. As we spent the last two budget seasons, and I'm sure previous to me as well, focusing on finding capacity in our current budget, we're streamlining our operations to take on new tasking and new things and, and to be more flexible and try to accomplish more things with the same resources. So we're already doing that. At some point, you have a problem with natural growth in a budget because of cost, because of cost of living, because of the CPI. It's growing. And so you have two lines that are, that are in fear of crossing each other, at which point then we need to look at other things. If, I don't want to hand to you a problem where you have to massively raise taxes. That's not what I'm trying to do. I, I want to be fiscally responsible. Also companion to that, as I see what's going on at Fairfax County right now, and they are, they are proposing a two and a half cent increase on their property tax. Now, will it end up being two and a half percent? Maybe, maybe not. But there will be some Maybe, maybe not, but there will be some, some tax increase coming out of the county this year. That said, that limits us and our ability to do that because that's a double added burden onto our taxpayer. So I'm very sensitive to that, that question as well. So as I look at these various forces at play, flat revenues out of existing revenue bases, growing, growing costs, reduce capacity because we're using it, we're trying to get more lean with that. I'm running out of rabbits I can pull out of a hat, and that, that is, that's probably the one thing budgetarily speaking. There are other things that keep me up at night, but that's probably the one thing budgetarily that keeps me up at night. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Ashton? Is that a no or a yes?
It's sort of yes. This is just out of curiosity, and I apologize for taking up your time on this, but you said you were getting rid of some policies that are theoretical but not practical. I'm wondering what that could possibly...
Well, there, there are things out there like there, you can, there are policies for percentage of debt to, to assessed tax base. And I mean, that would put our, our budget, our, our borrowing capacity at a number that we could never afford. So that's never even in play. We don't even look at those things because it's, it's not meaningful. So it's just things like that, just trying to clean out, it's like a housekeeping thing. We're just trying to clean out some of these housekeeping things that have been around for a very long time, and we're just trying to remove those from, from the question.
Other questions for Mr. Ashton? All right then. I will open the first public hearing, which is separate, which is on the proposed ordinance to levy taxes. This is an appropriate time for individuals to come forward to address the council relating to taxes and the tax rate. Anyone with comments concerning grants or nonprofits or other items should come forward in the next public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on the tax Okay. I know. Exactly. Okay, so the public hearing remains open, and I will ask for a motion to, to continue the public hearing to a date certain of April 24th. Okay, discussion on the motion. Yes, ma'am.
If you have not looked at the, and I apologize for not having it with me, I thought I had it in my briefcase, but the mailer that the town manager sent out, it's, it's just a little bit larger than a piece of paper folded. It puts everything right out there, and then if you have more information that you wanted details on, then you could go to the Big Notebook online or come by, see staff, or I have a copy at my house. Call me up, we'll have coffee and look through stuff. But I thought that was very nice and concise, and I've used that to go back and forth when I'm looking for things in the big book. Thank you.
Okay, other questions, Ms. Friedrichs? Or, no, I'm sorry, not questions, comments on the motion. I apologize.
It's more of a comment. No, I just wanted to thank you for, for coming up with the budget that was that close with such massive increases in things that we needed to pay for, including water and sewer, which nobody wants to do without. So I know that was tough, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Madam Town Attorney, do we need to do a roll call vote for this? I know it, it was spelled out earlier, since it's to continue.
No, we do not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
We do not at this point.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. And that would be the same for the, the other roll call vote as well?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we have a motion to approve made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. All those in favor say aye.
Just to clarify, a motion to continue, not to approve.
Did I say approve?
Yes. I'm sorry. I just want to clarify that. I know it's a weird...
Thank you for that. It, it remains open, so there's a motion to continue, I apologize, made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Thank you. All those in favor of continuing to a date certain of April 24th, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. That's why I have a vice mayor right there. I will call the next two public hearings concurrently on the fiscal planning resolution and the appropriation ordinance. This is the appropriate time to come forward if you want to address anything on the budget that is not related to the tax rate. Is there anyone left out there that would like to come forward? Okay, then the public hearings will remain open, and I will ask for a motion to continue the public hearing on Resolution 18G, 17 to April 24th. That is the fiscal planning resolution.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion. Anyone?
Yep, we need more time.
All right, yep, more time. Thank you. With that, I will call the question. All those in favor of continuing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. And finally, is there a motion to continue the public hearing to appropriate the funds to a date certain of April 24th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. So we'll have another public hearing on the budget in a couple of weeks. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And that concludes our agenda, and I would like to move that we adjourn in honor of Councilman Davidson this evening. Thank you. I'm really glad that I shared the dais with all of you this evening. This was a tough one. So in honor of Councilman David, Davidson, we move, we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and we stand adjourned at 9:16 PM. Thank you, everyone.